We did not bring any action.
Yeah.
Live on YouTube.
Excellent. Call a meeting to order the occupancy tax committee meeting for April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. I have a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-first meeting. John, Mr. Wild. All in favor?
I.
Oppose, carry. All right. Action agenda, business items. What can you tell us about? You're just moving money.
Right.
Four thousand.
We budgeted for two thousand twenty-two, based on five million dollars in collections.
That was silly.
I'm going ahead and have a crystal ball there. So we collected six million eight ninety, eight hundred ninety-five thousand nine eighty-seven. So we need, need to move four hundred and seventy-four thousand from the reserve to other payments and contributions in order to make the twenty-five percent payments to the towns.
Excellent. Looking forward to it. Somebody want to move that? John? Second? Anybody? Going once?
For discussion, I guess.
Well, Mike. All right, we got a motion, discussion?
Yeah.
John?
That's in addition to what we were going to be allocated based on the last formula. Because we received more than anticipated, so this is beyond the usual formula. Because the formula was based on what we thought we would get.
So it's always twenty-five percent of collections. But for the twenty-two budget, we estimated collections at five million dollars. So now that it came in at almost, you know, seven million, we need to take additional money from the reserve to go back to the towns.
We'll be giving, in October, that will be larger than other.
Or, no, this comes out by June first. Do you think so? The thirty thousand. The, the initial distribution of thirty thousand comes out in October. Then, once the treasurer has, has completed collections and then the twenty-five percent, the balance, the twenty-five percent comes out. So see by June first. October is just thirty thousand to everybody. The true up, Kevin calls it the true up.
This is, so June will be getting more than we anticipated because.
Did you, did you get the chart?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, it's on there.
On page two.
Craig?
And the percentages are based on what?
The percentages are based on, it's prorated based on the way the money comes in from the individual town. So when the same percentage that it comes in, the same percentage is used to calculate the final distribution.
Your, your percentage went up one point three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering if that's because of the.
Good leadership? No clue.
Do you want to answer that?
I couldn't hear what you said. Some of it, yes.
John?
Fifteen percent. Over everything happened, where do we think it came from? That much point for you, because, you know, contribute.
Correct. Correct.
Correct.
Well, I hope so.
Yes.
Yes. It's a three on five zip code, so that always is a problem.
Your town, your town's way too big. Go ahead, Mike.
We do not go by zip codes. It's set up by where the actual property is located, that we receive the money from. So they, whatever I didn't, I don't have to think about whatever.
Went from fourteen to fifteen, three. Anybody else? Yes, Mike?
I've seen some numbers here that looks like the occupancy tax distribution to the towns doubled from last year.
Real close. Real close. Bolton and Lake George is the village.
Yes.
Granted, you know, last year was a banner year. I just am frustrated, like I typically am, about our lack of reserves and investment funds related to tourism. And I'd really like to see if we could find a way to change this distribution to a limit of what it is today going forward. Plus inflation.
We, we, we have plenty of reserve, and we worried about.
We always get requests, right? And, you know, the, the town of Lake George is going to get almost three hundred and fifty thousand this year.
Yeah.
Good haul.
Well, we got that out of one point eight million that we collected. That's what it's related to, amount to collect is what you give back.
You know, it's, it's, it's something that goes to the towns, the towns can choose what they want to do with it. It's difficult for us to try to figure out what the big picture of all tourism is.
I, I don't, I don't think so, Michael, I think that's a mis, misnomer. We, we don't, since you, what, what do you think we're doing with it?
Spending it.
Damn right, we're spending it, that's what they collected it for.
You know, maybe another way to look at it is, you know, you got to spend it this year, or it comes back to the county.
I, I, I don't go along with that philosophy, Mike. We keep track of our money, we can tell you exactly what we have at any given time. So if we don't use it all, I have a big insurgence of requests, starting in the first of January. So I roll over quite a bit of money in order to cover those expenses. Over the long haul, it's zero, but there are times when we have money and times when we don't. Kevin?
Yeah, as far as the, all the towns, we've got all the reports done correctly in the town. I, I think all the towns at the end of twenty twenty did have money left over because COVID hit. And there wasn't a lot of events, very few towns doled out the money here where at first, most of them do it on a have an event and they reimburse, which I think is the best way of doing it. But that's the way it was done. So was there, did we all carry over money? I, I review these reports very closely. Yes, we all carried over money. But when the request, when things started picking up last year, in twenty twenty-one, the request came in, you're able to do that. And so when you, when, when they finished twenty twenty-one, there are some with balances now. We don't all hundred percent do it the same way, but we, I would say we're about eighty percent, we all do it the same way now. Nothing says you can't do it a different way. But Mike, I, I honestly believe the towns put most of their revenue towards events in their areas, whether it be fireworks to draw more people in. I think the increase you're seeing on this report now is because of the short-term rentals. I think a lot of this increase in revenue, which what, what we projected, when I sat with Ryan that time, if we looked at this and we thought a million dollars would be collected or when the short-term rentals started paying OxyTax. So I do think it's used wisely by the towns and, you know, and I know this is not the proper time to bring it up, but I will mention that when I removed the funding, the spending plan from the towns back in twenty twenty, once to the chagrin of a lot of the towns. You know, I said, when we had the money, you know, if I was in a position or not in a position, but I would suggest that we put more money back into the towns. And my reasoning for that is because I think the towns know best where to put that money in the what events, in what operations they want to do. So I would ask this committee in the future to consider putting the money, some more money back into the towns and, and trying to avoid people coming to the county asking for events that really should be towns' other. So I know that's long-winded, but I do think most of the towns spend their money very wisely. The reports that we've been getting lately are very detailed, in most cases, I can't say every case, and at least it was the last one.
Kevin, I, I appreciate that, and I will put you on the agenda for that discussion.
Just a follow-up.
Mike?
If you don't mind. And granted, I'm at large, I don't run a town, I don't have that background, and I trust what all of you do. All I'm thinking about is big picture for the county and what the county can do. And I, I just feel that there's more that the county could do in supporting some town projects, in supporting some town infrastructure projects that the towns can't do themselves. And granted, we do have some money in reserve, but it's not really dedicated, or we never really talk about what kind of big things we could do that the towns couldn't do themselves, and we can't do ourselves because there's not enough money. So that's the only, that's all I'm really going at. I don't want to audit the towns, I don't want to audit the county, that's not what I'm looking for. It's truly just, there's opportunities for us to do some bigger things.
Mike, I agree with you, I, I think we have monies available that we could do other things with other than the events, just exactly what you're talking about. So we will just discuss that as well and see if, see what we have for ideas. Kevin?
Just one other comment, I would caution everybody about the reserve. Our figures on a piece of paper, so just, I caution everybody about the reserve. And, you know, before you start eating up that reserve, you know, I, I would caution everybody about that. And I like, like suggestion, you know, if, if people have projects, they think we should fund, they should bring it so they can have discussion.
Correct. I, I think it's I, of course, started the county list of ten major projects that were funded by the county. I really think the other projects should all go back to the towns for a number of reasons. The towns know better what, what they want. It also gives the town a chance to be in on the initial discussion about what the event is and what we can expect from it. So I anticipate we'll be talking about those things as well. Probably had nauseam. John?
Yeah, one thing about the reports is, you know, when the Queensberry sends them out, this is what we expected on, based on what we expected on. And then it asks us what we have in the balance. And we tell them, that's what we have in the balance at that time. That does not account for those that are still in the stream, that haven't come in and collected their approved amounts. Queensberry always spins down almost to the bottom line. It doesn't show on those reports because the lag on some of the applicants to come in and collect. Or even new applicants that came in and still collects out of that year, that report doesn't give the. So to rely on what the balance is at this current point in time is not really valid to determine what the town is carrying over to the next year because.
Correct. Anybody else got a motion on the floor? All in favor? Oppose? Carry? You up, Mike?
Okay, well, I got some good news and a little bit of bad news, but the good news is, is that, and the figure's already been out there. You know, we collected six point eight, over six point eight billion dollars last year in occupancy tax. Almost a million of that was from the short-term rentals. That's a sixty-two percent increase over what we collected in twenty-one. And a forty-one percent, which is to me is a more, a more important figure, forty-one percent over two thousand and nineteen, which was, two thousand and nineteen was on our trend. In other words, that was where we were kind of going, and that's what we projected was, you know, pretty close to five million in nineteen. So forty-one percent above that level is astronomical. I, I don't even know what that means. Any questions about that?
I, I have a question, Mike, do you expect to do that again this year?
I don't, but.
What do you expect?
But collections right now are twenty-two percent above this twenty-one.
Okay.
So I probably will be wrong, and this is one of those times when I'll be glad to be wrong.
Same here. I hope you're right.
But because, be honest with you, I look at the trends, what the last few years project, and twenty twenty-two should be somewhere five two, five, five million.
Right.
In that, if you use the projections, if you go by the twenty-two percent we're up now over last year, we're going to be well over seven million. I don't know that we have the capability of collecting that, I, I just don't know, I don't know enough about the.
We're going to find out. We're going to find out.
Yeah, we're going to find out, yes. Any other questions?
Right. I, I just want to commend the treasurer's office and the county attorney's office. Mike and Ryan Dickey in particular worked very hard on getting that short-term rental money in. And if that's another million dollars a year that we can conceivably rely on, that's, that's huge, that's a real game changer.
It is, it's a lot of money. Anybody else?
Okay, now for the kind of, a little bit of bad news. Everybody's aware that we had a contract or have a contract with Granicus to find all of our short-term rentals within the county. The contract was based on approximately fifteen hundred new properties that they could find for us. We got the first download a week ago, and it had five hundred and ninety-five listings on it, which was about a thousand short what they said they were going to be able to deliver, and over four hundred of those we already had registered. So Wednesday I have a going, going to be having a discussion with the people that own Granicus to determine where we are. Because I'm not comfortable with, well, comfortable, nothing, I'm not putting thirty-five thousand dollars in their hands for two hundred listings. But they said they were going to give us fifteen hundred, so I will keep you posted when that happens.
Do, do that, what, what, what prompted them to tell you they were going to do fifteen hundred?
That was their research, that's what they based the contract on, because we're paying on a per-property fee.
Right.
Right, so they said that they did their research and could come up with fifteen hundred new listings for us for short-term rentals. Like I said, the first dump was five hundred and ninety-five listings. Almost four hundred of them we already had.
That'd be interesting, are they coming here, or you tell?
No, this will be soon.
Okay.
Colorado, well, I'm not sure, let me be fair, I'm not sure exactly who I'm going to be talking to, because two of the people that I dealt with when we first started this won't respond to me anymore, so.
It's this Wednesday?
Yeah, this Wednesday.
What time?
Two thirty in the afternoon, I believe.
You want to send me the link? Well, tell me no.
I'm going to tell you no.
Will you send me the link?
Let me think about that, Dennis, to be honest with you, because this is going to be kind of a a difficult conversation, I don't know whether we want to get that, the next one, absolutely, if something doesn't happen right, then yes, because the next one is going to have to have someone from the county attorney's office. I just want to see if we can make it work before you start getting me.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yosa?
Yeah, that's it, any questions?
Call it sure, me.
Yes.
Okay, I have a quarterly report from Cool Insurance. I'm sorry, John?
Granicus was also going to try and sort out short-term rentals, whether they were.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And what they gave us, we, I mean, is good information, other than the fact that, like I said, almost four hundred of them, we already had registered. The information that they provided is good as far as the location and the owner and that they've actually got the tax map number there, so it makes it easier for us to find them and so forth. But, like I said, we're, we based this contract on fifteen hundred and we got six hundred.
Is that, is that the same company Lake George use?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Cool Insuring Agency.
Oh, morning, can y'all hear me?
Yeah. Hey, Mike. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks, yeah. I sent the report in a little while ago, but certainly it was a, a busy first quarter of twenty twenty-two for us. Thirty-seven events, which I indicated was the, the most we've had since I've been in Glen Stalls. Sorry, my phone's not behaving here. Nineteen Thunder Games, but, you know, certainly a total of ninety thousand four hundred and fifteen attended the events. WWE came back, Section Two Basketball was back after a two-year absence, the New York State Boys Basketball Finals, which is about eleven thousand fans. Quite honestly, that was a little bit low this year compared to our history. Like, a lot of that was due to matchups and a lot of private schools didn't make the final four. So hopefully we're back at the fifteen thousand dollar level next year. So a very, a very busy quarter. As I indicated, you know, nineteen Thunder Games, unfortunately, the team did not make the playoffs this year, and, and we completed last Sunday. And, you know, just I want to make note that the Queensberry Hotel does sell about seven hundred hotel rooms a year for all the teams that do stay at, at the hotel for Thunder Hockey, so very busy quarter. Coming up, we have a concert tomorrow, Breaking Benjamin, where about three thousand tickets sold right now, which we think is good. A number of graduations coming up here in about a month, big dance, a big dance competition here in late June as well, which we had last year. And there's an opportunity for us to host a number of college basketball games this fall and winter. It's one of the, the local schools, arena is undergoing a renovation and will not be ready. We've got an indoor soccer group reached out to us to host in twenty twenty-three and kind of operate that team. So we'll see if that comes to fruition, but certainly a very busy first quarter for the arena. And we think it'll be a really good year for us, so happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Mike, I have a quick question. First off, congratulations on being busy, I really appreciate that. I know the Thunder struggled this year, but how was their attendance at the games?
Yeah, we were about thirty-three hundred this year, Dennis, which, you know, I think, you know, getting through COVID and, you know, having such a, a poor record was, was really good. Our paid tickets was, was the most we've had since we owned the team. So it was, it was, it was really strong, yeah. You know, we had a couple of games where I thought we'd have sellouts, and the, the weather kind of hit us, which happens every year, but it was a, a really good year off the ice for the team.
Good. Better luck next year.
Thank you, we can only go up from here.
That's right. Anybody have any questions? For, for Mike? For Jeff? Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Bye.
Quarterly, quarterly report for the Lake George CBB, Gina, you're up.
Thank you for that, good afternoon, everyone, or good morning, it'll be afternoon in just a few minutes. I do have a report, yeah, powerfully, Amanda, do you have that?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Great.
So, you know what I mean? Sorry, that's, would you, that's a fine, that's a cheap. And, exactly that. And so the thing is that.
Good to go? Good to go.
Great. All right, thanks so much, everyone. You can head to the, the next slide, please. So just as Jeff reported, this first quarter was a very busy quarter, our outcomes highlights. We sent a full, complete report to the tourism department to distribute back on April eighth. And today's presentation will include the highlights of our county occupancy dollars in action. That includes a sales overview, marketing and advertising outcomes, convention services outcomes, that, the groups that we had serviced in this quarter, as well as community development, and then what's to come in next quarter. Next slide, please. So Q1 sales overview, we had seven bookings that were for eighty-two hundred attendees and twelve hundred room nights for an economic and employment impact of three point nine million. And we also attended the Connect New York City Trade Show and realized forty appointments over two and a half days. Next slide, please. Our Q1 marketing report on websites. So as many of you may know, we launched meetlakegeorge.com last July, and since then have been growing our web traffic. And basically what happens with this website is we're promoting this where meeting and event planners can come and look at information about our venues as well as the destination. And then any other ancillary information is sent directly to visitlakegeorge.com, which would include calendar of events, dining options, other activities to do in the Lake George region. So we saw in this quarter over thirteen thousand page views compared to eight hundred page views last year. And we're also realizing a lot, a longer time of duration while folks are on the website because we're able to have more information about our actual venues for meeting and events. Next slide, please. This was a big quarter for press, and as we know, Ice Castles led the charge, but our total earned media was close to seven million dollars compared to about a hundred and forty-nine thousand in the same period last year. So Lake George Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau in the news, of course, Ice Castle's number one. But the ski championships that took place at Core Mountain, as well as the New York State Public High School Boys Basketball Championships, also realized significant press due to a, a greater push. And that's been a big part of our marketing plan this year is to, to capitalize and leverage our assets through public relations. Next slide, please. So for a marketing recap specifically in the meetings market, our messaging was all about rediscover meetings, meaning come back to meetings. And we were transitioning messaging to more than meetings, meaning all the things that you could do in the region with, when you're in town for a meeting. It showed a lot of imagery, as you could see, of people actually meeting and having a great time in the destination. And the channels that we used for all of these that you see here included e-blasts, blogs, social media channels of Instagram and Facebook and LinkedIn, and video advertising, which included display, regional and national in scope. We realized a hundred and sixty-six thousand impressions based on analytics from our digital campaigns. And this was specifically for the meetings market. Next slide, please. So in the sports market, we, our message was, we've continued the messaging of sportation, game time and playtime, and very family-friendly as a destination. Our channels for this were national publications, organic Instagram posts because of the actual age demographic of those who, who come and play their sports here in the region, blogs and e-blasts to our sports meeting and event planner database. Next slide, please. So this was our last month, this quarter was a very busy quarter, but March was last month of our wedding promotion, which began back in November. And the, the reasoning for this November through March is because this is the highest engagement period, starting with Thanksgiving and then ending with Valentine's Day. So as you can see here, our messaging, messaging was love is an adventure and picture yourself here in the Lake George region. And so we realized through our, our channel, social meeting, meeting Instagram and Facebook, display advertising, which were regional publications, we attended regional expos. And what I mean by that is we had our materials distributed throughout New Jersey meeting, or newjerseyweddings.com, and then at various actual live trade shows, wedding shows in, on Long Island. We also produced several blogs on weddings and e-blasts specifically to those contacts and leads that we got from the wedding shows that we attended. We were also able to distribute those contacts to all of our partners within the destination so then they could remarket themselves and retarget their information to these. so then they could remarket themselves and retarget their information to these contacts that we received from this wedding outreach. Next slide, please. And if you can click on that wedding video, this is just a short video that we've been using. Thank you. Next slide, please. For convention services, uh, there were several groups that were here, obviously in this first quarter, including the Alpine Nordic Skiing Event that was epic bore and our boys' basketball event, as well as Ice Castles. So for those, the Nordic skiing and boys' basketball, uh, we were able to provide welcome signage. And what I mean by that, the two posters that you see of welcome, those were distributed throughout for, for the skiing event throughout all of North Creek, as well as within the Lake George area, um, to restaurants, as well as some retailers, where we knew that there would be feet on the street. And then for boys' basketball, everyone, uh, we worked with the, um, Glen's Falls Collaborative, Collaborative to distribute throughout all of downtown Glen's Falls for, again, for those where we knew that there'd be feet on the street with regard to that basketball program. For Ice Castles, most of our, um, assistance for them had been off-site operations and logistics. And so we've continued that as they continued their cleanup of the event. Other services included blogs that we wrote about the particular events, microsites for fans as well as the athletes, uh, social, uh, promotion of the fact that they were in town. Public relations, as you saw from our earned media, registration assistance. We've also produced a show your badge pass, which was used for both, um, boys' basketball and the Nordic ski event for the, um, for the, for the athletes. And then services referrals based on the needs of those event planners. Next slide. Thank you. For community development, um, a big part of what we were able to produce this, in this first quarter were partner resources and support. And what I mean by that is everything from our e-news that you've seen, many of you are, are on the distribution list of our, of our e-blast, but we're trying to make sure that people within our destination know about the service offerings of our other partners. Um, and so we featured them in our newsletters. We've also handheld several of our partners in their quest to increase their businesses, whether it was because Ice Castles is in town or information that was disseminated because of that event happening, as well as information disseminated with regard to the other sporting events that were in town. Winterfest Economic Impact, I did distribute that to this committee, as well as the tourism committee at last month's meeting, just because we had completed that and wanted you to have that data immediately. Jim Spellos, we hosted this hot technologies virtual program. Um, he's a, a worldwide nationwide speaker, um, within the meeting and events world. And we had forty partners attend, both clients and partners. And it was a very well-attended, um, opportunity to present, you know, what's to come, what's happening right now so that our partners could take advantage of how to best present themselves technologically wise. Our DEI initiative, we are part of the Partnership for Community Belonging Steering Committee that's, that's being led by Dr. Duffy. And, um, more news to come on that. Right now, we're putting together a survey of our destination, both businesses and residences with regard to their perception of belonging and our diversity, equity and inclusion as a destination. And then from there, we'll determine next steps based on the steering committee. And lastly, arrival to departure tourism training, we've trained a hundred and sixty-eight people to date. And as you'll see in things to come, what, what we're doing to as we, as everyone is gearing up to hire in this next quarter and, and promoting that to our larger businesses. Next slide, please. And lastly, what's to come in this next quarter? So beginning in April, uh, we hired a new staff person, Nick Kelly, who will be our sports and reunion coordinator. And he comes to us, uh, grew up in Minerva and when he graduated from Oneonta in college, he went off to Chicago and worked in the restaurant industry, as well as, um, in sales when he came back to, to the area, um, in wine and spirit sales and, um, has a love of the outdoors and knows the destination very well. And he will embark on his first tourism trade show with me, um, actually a week from today. And, um, A to D training, as I mentioned, this quarter coming up, uh, Lunch and Learn, we're hosting for business leaders, specifically those that are, have our larger employees, uh, uh, larger employers in the destination. Um, not only obviously lodging, but retail and dining, um, and attractions to send their new staff members to be trained in our tourism awareness program. Lake George's hiring, uh, that website is getting a refresh as we speak. We should be launching that at the end of this week to make it easier for our partners to, to put their, uh, their jobs on the site. Um, it will also be fed by indeed anybody who has jobs with, for the region, um, for our area, for the county, I should say, um, as well as other job sites. And then we are also backing that with a tourism promotion within a, um, actually a twenty-five mile radius around us to gain new, uh, employees for our destination. And then Meat Lake George is getting a full-blown website. We've been operating on a, on a kind of more of like a microsite that's been feeding into Visit Lake George. Uh, but it now warrants a lot more in-depth information specifically on our venues that, that can host meeting and events, um, throughout our destination. And, uh, we're feeding that by all of us, our own internal database that we've been managing for several years, but now we'll just have this API feed where when we make a change on our end, it changes the website immediately. And lastly, we have several trade shows coming up. Um, the Adventure Travel Trade Association, which many of you know, we hosted here in the Lake George area back in twenty nineteen. We will be going to Oregon for that show and I think right now, um, we may have forty-two appointments. I don't have that final number because we're still waiting for that. Um, we may get that final number this week. We have Sports ETA, which is, we are a member of this organization and this particular event is in Texas, which we will go and have one-on-one appointments. Right now, as of last week, we'd requested thirty-eight appointments. We don't know how many we will get until later this week so that we can finalize our homework, if you will, before we head out to that trade show next week. And then GovBuy, uh, we're doing this trade show with the Fort William Henry staff. And this will be at the Empire State Plaza, and this is where we have the opportunity to meet with all of the state agencies, many of whom have done other business in the market area. And it's just, and we haven't been able to do this trade show since, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, actually, was the last time we did this. So it's been, you know, a two-year hiatus, so we're really excited to be back in front of these state agencies that do have business for the region. And lastly, at the end of the month, we will be at, um, or the end of May, we'll be at the Empire State Society of Association Executives. And these are, that's, that organization is the mothership of all state agencies or state associations, forgive me for that. Um, and so we, that will be more of a, um, it's more of a client recognition event, if you will, because many of those state associations have met in the Lake George area before. So that's what we've got, you know, for our recap, as well as what's to come. Can I entertain any questions for the group?
All you've done? Are you still in Florida?
I am. I'm sitting in the lobby of a hotel on my way to the airport as soon as I finish this call.
Anybody have any questions for Gina about any of that? What's the show your badge? What benefits do they get from that?
Oh, so what happens is it's, um, uh, if you are the person that is part of that trade show or that event or that sporting event, and you have a badge with your name and, and the conference name, you can show that to a number of our, of our partners uh, and get either a discount or a buy one, get one free or something for free. Um, and, uh, I'd love to show that to the group. You can just go to meetlakegeorge.com backslash pass and it will show you the list of those attractions, dining options, retailers that are offering specials to those who are in town specifically for that particular event.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else got any questions? Thank you, Gina. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Kristen, we're up to you. Occupancy Tax Funding Strategy Overview.
All right.
That'd be interesting.
Um, we talked a little bit about this last year when we had our workshop, um, and a lot of, lots changed in the last couple of years with our pandemic. Um, as we move from a tourism and economic crisis mode to developing a more comprehensive strategic investment strategy and revenue generating model based on sound data strategy, uh, research and in-depth evaluation that creates more long-term sustainable tours and growth. Um, you know, we went through this a little bit last year in the workshop. We talked about how we have changed the evaluation process to collect more data from our applicants with regards to our special events. And so strategic tourism development investment is really, it's about critically looking at how our funding is used and making sure that all those pieces align and row in the same direction programmatically, um, to create a transformative change within the destination. So in essence, what we're looking to decide to support and fund now will help us guide in the path moving forward. Um, so as in front of you, you have a number of, um, applications, just like we've had in the past few months, come through. And so as we look at it, look at occupancy tax as investments and opportunities for your, for the future of this area. Um, and so we ask ourselves some of the questions, you know, what are we funding and why are we funding it? Um, what is the return on that investment? And, you know, what, for every dollar spend that we have, what does that look like coming back to us as a destination? Is the event or is the request that's being asked, asked of us transformative? Is it going to make a difference? Is it going to move a needle? Is it going to change the way in which your community is going to be perceived potentially from future business, future businesses wanting to relocate into it or potential for new, new visitors coming to the area? Um, and will it come back and grow time over time? Is it good for your community? Does the funding fit in and support the overall county vision for future tourism development? And how does that funding support the mission vision? Again, that's something to think about too, from a critical standpoint and a strategic standpoint, you know, what is our mission, vision overall as a whole as a county? What do we want to be seen and how do we want to be perceived as a brand, as a destination? You know, and how do all these things that we fund moving forward make sense from that strategic standpoint? Um, you know, do the things that we fund enhance and create new opportunities? Are they one-trick ponies? You know, is it a one and done? We fund something and then they're gone and that's it. The money disappears. It does, it makes no impact. Um, and does it create value and kind, marketing propositions and opportunities that will create, increase our visibility, our brand, our reach, um, enrich those niche audiences that perhaps we don't normally do through our tourism department? So the advertising, the promotion that we do in the tourism department, you know, is set at one level, you know, and does funding certain events or certain activities that reach very specific niche markets, you know, motorcycles or cars or athletes, you know? We reach those particular audiences that we don't directly impact. So how do those funding strategies and structures make a difference? Um, so these are just some of the things, um, in addition to also supporting opportunities for workforce development, diversity, equity and inclusion, which we heard a lot of talk about, you know, do these impact all those different pieces? So just my little piece here in the puzzle today is just to say, to get you thinking from a strategic and critical standpoint at the sixty thousand feet level, as we have all this money that we have to invest, you know, how do we look at these investments? How do they impact our destination as a whole? And how does that make a difference for creating sustainable tourism model going forward? So that's my two cents for the day.
Uh, that's great. Kristen, I assume we're going to have more?
Yes, I will give you more.
Yeah. Workshop meetings?
Yep. Happy to answer any questions too, if anybody.
Anybody have any questions for Kristen? Pretty quiet today, Mike.
Well, soon to come.
That's what I'm afraid of. Okay. Special Olympics.
Oh, okay. So Special Olympics has come to us for year two, their year three, um, request. So they're a three-year contract coming to Glen's Falls. They last, this past year, they had fifty thousand dollar requests, um, for occupancy tax funding. And this year they are requesting the same amount of funding. Last year they had, uh, just give me a second. The total economic impact of this was around three and forty-eight thousand nine hundred, nine hundred thirty-one dollars. Uh, they had approximately one thousand two hundred twenty-nine athletes and coaches, four hundred volunteers, seven hundred spectators, about fif- fifteen hundred day visitors and their total, uh, heads and beds, I have to go back and look, about six hundred sixty contracted room nights with a total hotel impact of a hundred and two thousand, three hundred dollars. So not a huge impact, um, from a room night, but also due to COVID, they were, they were setback a little bit. Um, they had some restrictions that they had to do. They will be looking at additional funding, external funding with sponsorships, whereas last year they came in late in the game. It was on, it was off, it was on, it was off. This year they will probably anticipate getting more sponsorship, uh, in the door, but they are requesting fifty thousand dollars in support.
They had a overall impact of three hundred and?
Uh, estimated three hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred, nine hundred thirty-one dollars is their projected economic impact for the event.
Well, there's no question. It's a, it's a great event.
So, and they're.
John?
Multi. Uh, they did, I have the full application. I believe they were emailed out to everybody, but I can get one where you could like.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
You're asking for our review, there's some kind of a budget.
You want to hold on, hold this in advance till you get the budget, John?
Yeah, they send a very comprehensive application packet, actually. Uh, it was emailed out to everyone.
Mike, you got something to offer?
No, I just found the, found the budget, uh, for John. Total expenses are two hundred ninety-two thousand plus. And that is their revenue projections. And it probably includes the fifty thousand that they're requesting, but I don't.
Yeah.
So is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mike. You second it?
Dennis, was this, when we originally did this last year, did we plan on this being a three-year support? I think we did.
Greg Shaken said, yeah.
Planned for the budget.
Is that what they, do they do three-year cycles and then go somewhere else?
They're committed for three years to come back. So last year, this year and next year.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, we, we had a resolution, uh, committing to that to three years and the amount of funding was not to exceed fifty thousand in the event that they didn't need the fifty thousand to give us flexibility to go down. Uh, so there's that resolution plus, uh, the adding it each year into the, the list of, um, where we're spending the op tax.
Anybody else?
Favor?
I suppose. Here, Ed or Mc, Crystal Kindlemore.
Uh, so Adrona Chris Kindlemore was moved from Lake George to Glen's Falls this past year. We're going back to Glen's Falls for December second through fourth. They're requesting amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, they do take place in December. Total cost to be borne by the organizers about ten thousand. Total cost of the event is about thirty-three. They anticipate revenue forty-two thousand. Um, they will be in City Park and it is a free event in the winter on the first weekend of December. They'll be using the money mostly for marketing and promotion.
I, I do, Mr. Chairman, the numbers don't add up. The total revenue is, is higher than the total cost.
Yes.
But if those numbers are right, then I'm, I'm not sure where that twenty-five thousand that's requested is going to go. I'm not sure I can support it because of that.
Well, I got thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five in costs. Tax that gets seventeen thousand. So the total anticipated revenue, please keep down. I don't know where that comes from. So I'm a little bit confused. Set up in a balance sheet.
Want to resubmit?
I'd recommend that, yes.
Or I can go back and I can pull their budget and their, all their numbers and have them email to you by this afternoon.
Or I can go back and I can pull their budget and their, all their numbers and have them email to you by this afternoon to take a look at.
Okay.
Reevaluate.
This is something that we need to decide this month.
No, then I have.
So we could, we can.
So we're going to table that. Arctic special event funding application for fall twenty twenty-two event, Great Escape Vampire Bar.
So this is a new event requesting uh funding for twenty-five thousand dollars to establish a vampire bar at Fright Fest. We'll be charging sixty-nine dollars a ticket to get into the event. Their estimated ticket revenue was five hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars with an estimated seven thousand five hundred attendees and a thirty-four thousand dollar bar revenue as well.
So why are they asking us for money? John?
Total cost of the event is twenty-five thousand.
You're going to have seventy-five hundred people and raise get thirty-four thousand just from the bar.
Right.
Plus tickets.
Yeah, but I mean, so they want us to basically pay for it.
They're basically asking us to pay for the build of the bar. Construction.
If it's the county, right here.
I don't either.
China's money.
So are we?
They are allowed to spend it for infrastructure that's going to promote. And so I think it is a loud expense under the old format, which is still in my head. And probably in the new format. But I I just don't, again, I don't think the numbers well, when they're saying the total cost of the event five thousand. Saying to build this vampire bar experience at the Jolly Pete Theater is going to be twenty-five thousand. I'm I'm just kind of confused.
So they're going to build the bar and they're going to reuse it every year?
Well, and that's good. I think that's their anticipation of the OTCS, but is that what they're going to do?
I I I don't see it. They they've got an event, they're raising way more money and they got invested. Why would we give them OTCS? What's the pleasure of the board?
Of supporting the Great Escape and everything else, but you know, I'm, 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 it's funny, it's supposed to be used to get the event going that might not have otherwise happened.
Correct.
But if they're going to put this event forward and expect to make all kinds of money doing that.
Right. So there's no motion on that?
Well, unless they have a better way of displaying the numbers, or maybe we.
Kristen?
You want the next meeting and to invite them in?
Well, you can talk to them about.
I'll talk about it, sure.
You know, what the board, what the board has said and see if they still.
Be happy to speak to them.
Venture.
I can get you more information with regards to additional members. I'll send that out this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Octantax supplemental municipal funding request. Village of Lake George.
So this came in before the treasurer's report and the final distributions. That was for the new distribution here um for request from the Village of Lake George of twenty-five thousand dollars in support of fireworks, weekly fireworks, Fridays on the lake, Wednesdays arts projects, Lake George Community Band, musical Mondays, tribute Tuesdays, jazz festival and advertising.
Well, I can tell you all those events are really, really successful, and they've been a big help for Lake George, so Friday night music, free music.
Back to the town, Mr. Chairman, and to the village.
Bording your money, Mike.
I'm trying to.
As the rest of the board feel.
I think it's a worthwhile thing. I appreciate the uh
The town has, yeah, the town has an additional hundred and seventy thousand.
Village. Village, village, village.
I'm not sure about the towns, kind of hard to follow this. Seven, six, two. I would based on that kind of changes year over year, I would say I would prefer this go to the town and the village. Cover it.
Mike?
No, I think it draws enough goodwill, enough people, and I like to support it.
Okay. Jean?
Do the same way.
John?
Yeah.
Morning, Mr. You want to move there? Mike, second. John, any further discussion? All in favor? I, motion carried. Let the record show. Okay, referrals, none. Privilege to the floor. Anybody who want privilege to the floor? Is anybody on Zoomitube?
Uh, you have the Winterfest contractual insurance, so.
Get managed.
No, I don't have it on mine. We have one other thing. Uh, we had an issue with the Winter Festival. We gave them fifty thousand dollars last year to do the Winter Festival. They did the Winter Festival. It was extremely successful. Uh, the Winter Festival is promoted by the business people of Lake George. They contribute to the festival. Uh, they've hired Christian Dutcher as an event coordinator to do it for him. Christian spent most of the winter trying to get insurance for the event. It was unsuccessful. Apparently, the insurance companies have turned the door on this kind of thing, shut the door, turned the corner. Uh, he could not get any insurance. Uh, and that was a requirement of our giving them the OTCS money. So my thought here is the event's over. We had no incidences. Uh, it's a moot point at this point. I think we should definitely do good on our offer for the fifty thousand. And uh next year will be another year. We can discuss it in the beginning of next year and before the event occurs and see what we want to do. So if somebody'd like to move that? John, Jean, any discussion?
If I, if I could address two points. Um, first, from a legal perspective, the statute of limitations on negligence is three years. So to the degree there was or was not an incident, uh, there would be no notice of that for up to three years from the date of the incidents, which is the end of the statute of limitations period. Second, uh, state law requires um an indemnification provision in a contract with the county in particular in this area. So I I am unaware how we would prepare a contract for this entity to sign that they would be able to comply with since they don't have insurance, so I'm not familiar if there's some other mode or means of providing occupancy tax funds to an entity outside of a contractual relationship such as a grant. I've not looked at that issue, uh, and I apologize because I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda today, and it wasn't on my copy of the agenda, so I didn't fully prepare for this issue before the committee. But those would be the, um, in an S, in a nutshell, the the core requirements or concerns, I should say, not requirements, is that entering into a contract would not be possible because we've had a contract prepared that he's not been able to sign because we don't allow a party to sign until they produce proof of insurance as required by the contract. Thank you.
So we can't pay this because there's no valid contract?
I'm not saying that the county can't quote-unquote provide this funding. I'm not going to say pay this because there's nothing to pay, but can't provide it. I'm not, I don't believe doing it in the standard format of a contract works, but I have not had the opportunity to review what, if any, other means or modes might be available
for money. The the committee is interested in making this payment, uh, so if you could review that.
Yes.
And give us some suggestions by the next meeting. Would you appreciate it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Jean?
How much money did they collect?
Uh, I don't know. Jean, I can find out though. Do you have any of that? You know?
Get it to us, yes.
Yeah.
And again, I I didn't prep on this particular issue because I didn't know it was going to be addressed, but I I believe the for some reason, I recall that this was a not a straight pay fifty K, but kind of a reimburse deal. So I'll also follow up with tourism to determine the status of of that as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion on?
Yeah, a motion to allow payments.
Yeah, you want to withdraw that motion for the payment? John, Jean, okay. Motion's withdrawn. Thank you. Don, is there anybody on line that wants to participate?
Uh, good morning, Chairman Dixon. No, there's no comment on YouTube as of right now.
It's twenty-five after twelve, done. Thank you.
You are correct.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. John, Mike, so move.